All right, it's Monday, January 22nd. Meeting's called to order. We do have a quorum present. And first on the agenda.
We have a discussion of our master strategy. Stacy's gonna cover the updates to the plans.
Sure.
Mayor, well, Mayor Fort Chan, Councilmember Park Chan. The master strategy is coming up for an update before you today. And just a little bit of a reminder where we've been. It was adopted back in 2016. It was really built around some core partnerships. The Corps of Engineers, property for Lila and then the city of Louisville being added on to the lease. Obviously, the University of North Texas and LISD had been key partners there. But also some support partners, being the Friends of Lila, Audubon, Texas, which will be a big player for us in the future. The DCTA, as it's right along the major transit lines. And then, of course, Lila Volunteers helped form this strategy. And this is one I'll read to you today. "The Green Centerpiece is a central feature of Louisville's identity, an important contributor to environmental management best practices in Texas, including research, education, and restoration, and a destination for students and other visitors from Louisville, the North Texas region, and the world." I'm not big for reading slides, but I think this is a real important thing because as we made decisions about the master strategy in Lila, I think we always need to use this as a touch point. The master strategy had 14 guiding principles. Obviously, strengthening Lila in the central area, protecting its carrying capacity, making sure that as we gain access to it, we don't destroy it, creating a nature center. And then, within the Green Centerpiece, creating a central area, which is mainly Lila, and then an expanded area where we could expand the green and live in harmony with the 2025 plan. Another big thing was for us to let the world know that Lila's there and how important it is. One of the things that I've heard over and over again, as I've made my rounds in the community and talked to everybody, is like, "I didn't even know Lila was there." And this is a great piece of property, and that's been one of our hallmarks. And then, obviously, to establish further partnerships, to expand knowledge and use and care of the area. And then, there were guiding principles made up specifically for the central area or Lila. Obviously, it's a fish and wildlife management area, and that's its primary use with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. But then it would also serve as an environmental research area, so we could tell how, one, our efforts to restore, to do restoration, what we're coming about and how effective were they, but also to keep an eye on, as we increase our uses of it, how is our human footprint making a difference out there? And then, environmental education, so that we can teach people how to not only protect Lila itself, but how their behaviors beyond the fence line impact places like Lila. And then, for the expanded area, you know, the city government, how we would help kind of expand the green and create that sense just beyond the fence line. So, creating land use and infrastructure investment. Of course, we've got the land use plans coming up. Looking at economic development, not only would we encourage green businesses to come in, but green development, so that some of the development in the area would reflect in the natural area of Lila. But also, you know, ecotourism is a big thing for us. Also, look at recreation and education, not only within Lila, but how do we make sure that all roads lead to Lila with our trail system, but then the rest of our park system pays homage to it as well. And then, of course, enhancing the quality of life for everybody, not just bipeds like us, but furry little animals and winged creatures and the like.
Did you just work bipeds into a presentation?
I did, sir.
That's awesome.
Trying. So, there are 75 action steps, and there's some examples that we had. Of course, a lot of what I'm gonna show today are city-led efforts, but every one of the partners had action steps that they took up. Of course, one of the major things was to create an institutional structure, which we've been working on. Look at ways that we can increase marketing efforts on environmentally related public art. I think the public art master plan's coming before you tonight, and you'll see a little bit of Lila in there. And also diversifying the audiences that get to Lila. We're making some great strides in terms of our interpretive plan, making sure that our marketing information is disseminated in different languages. But also, if you get a chance to go out there and meet Tiara Chapman, she's our new environmental education outreach coordinator, and she's amazing. And is doing things like taking walks that are usually held in Lila and having them in other parts of the park system to try to catch new members and get them to come out to Lila. And then, in the central area, which is specific to Lila, is to add recreational access and educational infrastructure at Lila. Enhancing Lake Park is a key destination within the centerpiece, and also, you know, it butts right there to Lila, and we need to make sure that we're doing that. One of the things that we talked about was putting together a new master plan for Lake Park. We delayed that a little bit because we need the overall park master plan to be updated, but we'll be looking at starting that up in the next, this year. We're looking at creating an interpretive plan for Lila so that people who, it's their first time out there, they walk out, they understand what they're looking at, can identify birds, and that we can also, that serves as a base for our curriculum. We've added a maintenance crew. Some of the parks team is out there. They help cut trails, take care of the buildings, mow. And then, also looking at a new roadway with an adjacent trail and enhanced interest. That has been delayed, or is not delayed, but it's associated with the repairs that they're doing to the dam and the road that Jung Street, which goes out through Lila, will be moved temporarily just south of that tree line where it is. And hopefully, we'll look at, once they move and repair Jung Street, we'll be able to use that as a trail. So, we're excited about that. Trail development within Lila, and then Volunteers, the river crew has been out, formed, the River Care Crew has already had six events where they've gone out kayak or walked the river and removed trash or excess fishing line. And then, for the expanded area, looking at the idea of acquisition of parkland to extend the Green Centerpiece. Obviously, in that map, we had the purple area that was Lila, but then along the river basin, the idea of extending the green. I think there's some really good pieces of property in there that we might consider purchasing in the future. Develop land use plans and design guidelines that reflect the environmental sensitivity and also connectivity to Lila, and I think you'll see that in some of the small area plans, and you all process for getting those done. And then, of course, work with private developers to incorporate Green Centerpiece concepts, especially as we're redeveloping and we have infill development. It's gonna be, I think, would be great, is if we had small pockets of those that reflected what's going on in Lila. You could use, you know, native plant menus in those, and also perhaps talking with those developers to help us with our connectivity elements. So, those were some examples of the action plans in the strategy, action steps, sorry. So, we've been meeting with the major core partners quarterly since November of 2016. There was a charrette for the Nature Center, and then each of the partners has hosted these quarterly meetings. And that's where, during those meetings, the discussions has led us to the update that we have before you now, but also some agreements that we'll talk about in a little bit. Our next meeting is coming up in February, where we'll talk about that each of our governing bodies has adopted the update and where we go from there. We adopted an operating structure, and essentially, the city, we're providing management of the access to Lila, but also overseeing the educational outreach and outreach portions of it through the general fund. UNT, obviously, is leading the scientific advisory component, not only through the restoration of the prairie land and other areas and trail building, but also via research. LISD is encouraging usage of the area preserved by their students and faculty, bringing them out. We've got a grade right now, I think, fifth grade comes out, every fifth grader comes out to Lila, and they incorporate the tests or whatever the general, the test is right now, that demoralize the students and handcuffs teachers. But I don't feel that much about it.
She's not on base.
And then, we're currently working with interlocal agreements with UNT and LISD to manage that student access to Lila, ensure that we've got enough coming to the facility that when we want to enter into an agreement with the Texas Audubon, that we've got a sustainable funding stream. As a group, assembled the financial resources for the Green Centerpiece. UNT's funded two positions. We have two full-time positions, part-time staff for educational purposes and the maintenance staff. We have the added fiscal year, the interpretive park ranger. I will say that we have identified a candidate for that and hope to be offering a job in the next couple of weeks and have them on by March, rolling, ready to go. We have a cool visitor experience with the backpacks at the Louisville library, where people can go check out two backpacks, and it has some pamphlets to help people guide their way through Lila, but also gives them a free entry into Lila, so if they want to just try it out and experience it. But they're kids' backpacks, so you either have to just throw it over one shoulder, or if you try to get two in, it'll be walking through Lila like this, and it just doesn't look great. So then, we also have worked with LISD. They contributed four portable buildings, which have been modified into office space, an exhibit hall, and a classroom. So, that's really helped. The Friends of Lila are operating one, and right now is exhibit space and a visitor's center. And then, we hosted, we're part of hosting the SER conference. I think originally in the plan, it said that we would host the entire conference. We just didn't have the facilities to facilitate that. So, what happened was that when we worked with UNT, they got the 2017 conference, and the Friday afternoon, we hosted workshops and a social out there, out on the prairie, and it was amazing. It looked like something out of Lord of the Rings or Harry Potter. There was this really kind of neat, and everybody had a great time. So, updates and future action, things that you need to be aware of and things that are coming up. On item number 14, you'll see that it was about securing water supplies to maintain the desired pond levels out at the preserve. And originally, we had talked about using reuse water, but Keaton is agree to think that perhaps using a direct line of raw water out there will help us, and it'd be less expensive to maintain those pond levels, so that not only can people kayak out there year-round, but then also the wildlife doesn't suffer too much when levels go down. And item number 25 is implement the storm water ordinance. Last year, they did some facility assessments and used, whenever they found a deficiency, used best management practices to address those deficiencies. Y'all know the stormwater utility fee is coming up. But this year, in 2018, we'll look at implementing pollution prevention standard operating procedures. And essentially, the main focus, or one of the large focuses of that is like our operational stuff. So, from a park standpoint, we're looking at how we use pesticides or insecticides and maybe modifying that from a runoff perspective, so that we're looking at water quality, making sure that after we've mowed a park or a median, that our team or the contractors are blowing clippings back onto the median or the park, so they don't go through the stormwater system. But also, maybe down the way, looking at how we can look at improving stuff infrastructure-wise with bioswells and the like, which you'll see coming up at the MGC. And then, one of the big things was the design charrette for the Nature Center. And originally, when we passed this, the commitment was that the city would put in 10 million and LISD would put in 10 million. In 2017, we went through the design charrette and came up with this beautiful idea of a nature center nestled back between trees in a savanna, and you'd come upon it driving up, and you wouldn't see it till you turned a corner, and there'd be a wonderful place for public art, bird watching facilities off of it. It would be a multi-use center that could work with our, sorry, some of my stuff is missing, so I'm a little discombobulated. But it would be a multi-use facility that could not only hold classrooms and offices, but have space that we could use for rentals or perhaps hosting weddings or events, and that really would accommodate not only the researchers from UNT, the students from LISD, but also Audubon, Texas, as they look to manage the facility and raise funds out there. There would also be an outdoor playground where we'd integrate some of the principles of outdoor play. I want to have a slide that goes from inside out. We're still debating whether that will happen. So, but after the...
The zip line.
Zip line, yes. So, unfortunately, as we went through the process and after the charrette, LISD didn't get to put the Nature Center up on their 2017 bond program. So, the city stepped up and committed to fund the entire thing, and that will be through four B funds, through tax notes, some cash, and the sale of bonds. But this will all be contingent on us being able to come to agreement and work with UNT and LISD to make sure that we have the stream of students and researchers coming to the facility that can help meet the feasibility study that was put together by Texas Audubon. And if we don't get there, then I think that we need to probably consider either slowing our roll a little bit or coming back together with the partners and saying, "How do we address this, and how do we make up that gap?"
Or phase the facility. I mean, there's all kinds of options that we'll need to look at.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Donna, how long with that plan, what's the timeline? Because I'm seeing 2018, and I know they're pushing back.
So, right now, we say 2018 because we're looking at environmental assessment, and so that's what we need by design. So, again, until we get that from commitment, from LISD especially, we're not gonna spend a lot of money on a complete design. So, it may slow down from what you see in the plan, but we're leaving it as it is now to try to work through it.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, what's the, I guess, the drop dead date that we're waiting on to get some information back from LISD or?
Well, they haven't agreed to that at this point in time. So, you have a use agreement that talks about 4,000?
4,000.
4,000 students.
For the Nature Center to happen, you gotta have 10,000 students going through that.
So, I mean, that's not only gonna be LISD, but perhaps other schools also that they're gonna introduce this to. I think we've got another full work, a full year of work, just to nail down that number. So, I think it is likely that the timeframe will slow down.
So, I wanted to kind of dig into this just a little bit more. If we, 10,000, so there's a dollar figure associated with that, 10,000 students coming through, right?
That's the feasibility study conducted by Audubon. That's what they're saying they have to have.
And that is simply for operational expenses.
Operational. We're carrying the capital.
We're carrying the capital for the building.
That's correct.
So, those operational expenditures, would they, would they pay for the salaries of the staff in that facility? So, LISD would be basically passing through, go ahead.
So, it's not just, those fees won't cover all the operating costs. You're gonna have to have those fees, plus you're gonna have to have the money that Texas Audubon will bring to the table, because they're a major fundraiser.
Right.
That's why it's so important. It's a package, and so you can't really look at any one piece of this separately. It's a complete package. So, if Texas Audubon doesn't come to the table, you may not be able to raise the sponsorships and the contributions to cover the cost, which again slows it down. So, it's one step at a time.
What kind of commitment are you looking for from Audubon in terms of year after year?
Well, they would be signing an agreement to actually manage the facility, and I would say that's gonna be, and we haven't, again, you're way out in front of me, we haven't made those, you know, haven't negotiated that, but I'd say it'd at least be probably a seven to 10-year contract.
So, the bonds, these are our standard bond terms?
They're COs. 20-year COs.
20-year COs, okay. So, not our 16-years, our 20-year?
Normally, on the COs, against the other funds, we do 20.
And that 20 million, I know we talked about it, we've talked about that number, we've kind of hung our hat on that number. How much of an impact does this, has the market's inflationary rate, how much of an impact does that create of what we could get for our 20?
So, when we went through the charrette process, at that point in time, for what the partners all agreed need to be built, that could be built at that time for the 20 million.
Right now.
We're out there.
I can't answer that question, so.
And in two years, we won't, we still won't be there.
That's right.
Okay.
To Roland Melville.
Gotcha. But this doesn't commit us to any of that. What this does, this is just setting the plan and the guidelines, just like any of our other master plans, they can be changed, they can be adapted.
That's correct. It gives us all something to work towards.
But if we don't put a goal, a goal on it, then it doesn't make any sense to even have this conversation.
That's right. Now, the charrette was a big step in the Nature Center development. We all came together and we all agreed to what we want included in that building, but it's gonna take getting LISD especially on board to get Texas Audubon on board. And without those two players, I would certainly recommend to the council that you not move forward.
Is there an opportunity to bring in CTC on board? Or some other educational entity?
Absolutely. All kinds of different colleges could be engaged, absolutely.
I'm thinking maybe even the charter.
Charter schools.
Charter school company that's right there in Waters Ridge.
Yes.
Let's go back to LISD for a moment. They set up 2 million something plus to improve Lizdola, adding classrooms, et cetera. So, that has to have some impact on what use they would make out of our facility. There's no way it can't.
I asked Dr. Rogers that question, and he told me they were two separate issues.
Well, it's a good answer from Dr. Rogers, but I'm asking you.
Well, how would I know? I don't run LISD.
It's hard to believe that they wouldn't have an impact.
I understand.
They'll use their classrooms and their facilities first.
Those are pretty limited resources.
They are.
That's pretty limited.
But depending on what their finances are, they may be using pretty limited resources and saying, "This is what I have, this is what I can do, I can't do anything else, so kids have fun."
So, now, those students actually come through Lila, or the fifth grade class comes through Lila at this point in time. So, it's really two different uses. But I will tell you, at this point in time, tonight, it's on the LISD agenda. So, that will tell you whether LISD is committed to this plan or not.
I know there's, we're not committing to any money on this, and I agree with TJ. This is, if you don't have a plan, you don't have a place to go next. But I have a lot of concerns, particularly when I went through looking, going back and looking at the centerpiece plan, and couldn't help but notice that we're committed for four B funds on eight different items, and three of those have the $4 signs, they're major numbers, 33, which is the Audubon Center, 31, which is land acquisition, and 63, which, I forgot what that one is, but anyway. And then, I looked at 4B, and I looked at the history, and I can bore you with a lot of numbers, but the 4Bs, basically, if you want me to go through the numbers, I will, but 4Bs shrinking, and we're putting, piling things more and more on top of it, and I'm just looking at it going, you know, have we sat down and looked at what all we're thinking we're gonna pile onto 4B, and how many are actually sitting on top of the same $1 bill?
Yes, on a regular basis.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because I have really some real concerns, and then, obviously, 4B is volatile, it's, you know, the economy and sales tax, and we've been on a good ride, but that won't last forever.
That's why we have the 20% reserve on the 4B fund. We'll look at it very, very conservatively.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of things that jump off of some of your questions is, the action plans do encourage us and LISD and UNT to help us reach out and find other partners with each of their bailies. We already do a lot of programming with other school districts, so that's also on our eye. But the agreements that are coming before you with LISD and eventually UNT both have line items in there encouraging the growth and a commitment to the growth of their current programming. So, we've seen some progress with LISD in the last couple of months in terms of coming to us to help them with their curriculum and wanting to grow other grades. And I'm hoping that we'll get to that commitment of 10,000 within the next couple of years. But they are, at least in writing, saying, "We are gonna grow this program."
And Lizdola is, they've got a considerable chunk of that set out for ag, for FFA and their ag programs. So, Dr. Rogers is not incorrect, but, you know, if they get caught in the crosshairs from Austin, they're gonna leverage everything they have. So, that one, I just, I need more comfort from the ISD. I think we'll do it.
I think that kind of raises a problem I'm having with all of this, which is the sense that we're, again, I'm not against it, don't misread me, it's the money, but that, you know, what seems to be happening is people gathering around the table saying, "It sounds like a great idea. Let me shove the cost on you, City of Louisville, you build it, and I'll see if I can fund it, come up with the money. Hopefully, the fees will cover the operating costs, but guess what? If they don't, who's gonna rewrite the check? They're gonna push it back across the table again, and it don't. It was a great dinner, I'm glad you paid for it."
And I would highly recommend that you not do that.
I don't wanna do it.
And we won't.
I want to know I won't.
Yeah, that's why I've recommended, I've said, every single time we've talked about this. So, if LISD does not make a commitment in accordance with that feasibility study, we should not move forward with this project.
And I'm, by the way, comforted to note that the timeline, and I knew this, it was intrinsic, but the, this is, elements of this document come from, you know, a year ago and two years ago, and so, but it was, it was my third understanding Audubon. I'd almost thought Audubon had been put on the shelf for a while. I guess it's not really on the shelf, because you want to continue to explore, but the timeline's definitely not what it was two years ago and a year ago.
So, Texas Audubon actually approved the project, so National Audubon has not approved the project. And there were some issues related to staff turnover at Texas Audubon, changes in personnel. So, there's been various issues related to Audubon.
We are still moving forward in the sense that we're trying to work with them to integrate their curriculum into how we rewrite the curriculum that includes LISD and create, you know, they've got the Cedar Hill, Cedar Hill, right, and then the Trinity River, that we're gonna try to create this idea of a three-legged stool for curriculum, like we would have one, and there'd be some overlapping, but at least they're just connected. So, we're making that commitment, even if it's not quite get to the point of running the Nature Center.
Yeah, sure. I want to make one last statement, too, and it's a reiteration. My, I don't have an issue with the Nature Center. All of my concerns are the same. All of my concerns are the same.
And then, we had item 63, which was improved kayak launches. I think it's not specific, but the idea was that initially that we would be executing and building two at one time. I think we've talked a little bit about this recently, about how we're probably gonna look at a phased approach with that, look at building the one at Hebron Parkway first and phasing the one in at Lila a little bit later. Some of that has to do with how long that dam project and rerouting those utility lines will be, but also it might give us an opportunity because of where the ramp would be in Lila to go after some Texas Parks and Wildlife boating access funds. So, that might help us bridge the gap in terms of cost that we've seen. And then, so here, we've got the council meeting, we've got the centerpiece master strategy up before you for approval, the interlocal agreements. We're gonna pull the UNT one. We had a last-minute question from them and some of their legal team, so we'll bring that back, but the LISD one is the one with the most students and parks, so we'll bring, continue to bring that. Over the next couple of months, we're looking to negotiate updated lease with the Corps, so that we have an extended term, look to satisfy bond requirements if we do move forward with the Nature Center. And then, of course, Audubon, Texas, working with them for a management agreement for the Nature Center and working with us programmatically to create that three-legged stool. And that's my report.
So, I have a technical issue to ask council about. I would like to vote on the master strategy, but there are two... I would like to vote on the master strategy, but there are two items in the master strategy that I have conflict with. First is item eight, there's an education component, and there's a request in there that Waste Management be a partner. The other is item 72, which would be landfill reuse. So what happens to the landfill? How does it get repurposed? So both of those would, well, would be a conflict, or at least they'd look a conflict. So what I would ask is, could we pull this from consent? Or just pull these two items from consent? Do we have to pull the?
Pull the item out.
Pull the whole thing?
And then pull those two out.
And then pull those two out, item eight and item 72. And you guys vote on item eight and 72, but I could vote on the rest.
Okay, so are we, we're voting on the entire?
Updated document.
The updated document.
We already approved the document a year ago, and then we just approved a revised and updated document.
But for me to vote on the revisions, I need to have them separate from revise the whole document? Okay.
I don't see an issue with being able to just pull those two.
But that's all right.
They haven't said no, so I guess it's okay.
It's just that council legally. Right, legally.
Can I make that motion?
Thank you.
I don't think to pull those two out or to pull it all out, I don't think I can.
I wouldn't think so.
I would prefer you did.
Yeah, okay. So I made item 72, whoever wants it. Or you could just interrupt me and say, hey, we're going to approve the whole thing, the whole consent agenda, at which point I'll close my ears and run out of the room.
So what, so what, how would the motion go?
So you would have to pull the item from the consent agenda. And then when it's pulled from the consent agenda, then you would vote on it separately. But you would first remove items number eight and number 72. You would vote on that. And then, in my understanding, and TJ would have to leave the room, and then we would vote on number eight and number 72. It doesn't matter which order you do it in. You just can't be in the room with eight and 72.
So are you doing that, Brandon, or I don't?
I'm doing it. I'm just trying to figure it out.
It sounds like an accounting thing.
Not really.
Yes, it does. I'm not good talking.
There's numbers involved.
So we basically pull.
So is this going to increase?
Pull number three.
Some complexity in the future?
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
That was an easy answer.
So should I pull number three first and then pull it from consent and then make the suggestion? Or would you say, how would we do the next?
You pull it from consent, then you do consent, then as you go through the poll items, then you pull the other two out. It's like Russian nesting dolls. We just keep.
That's like you pull it off, and then you say, then you would make a motion to approve except for items number eight and number 72.
Oh, I can pull the item, okay, eight and 72, okay, got you.
And then you would get up and leave, and then you would consider number eight and 72.
That's the part I wasn't hearing. Okay, got you.
As long as, so if you pull eight and 72 out, then every time we look at the plan, it doesn't include eight and 72?
No, it will. It's just going to be approved.
Approved differently.
Or not approved. I don't know how the vote's going to go, but assuming y'all approve it, it'll be approved as a whole. He just won't have voted on those two items. I'm assuming if it passes, it'd have enough votes.
If it didn't pass, then it would create an issue.
Right.
Because then LISD would be adopting something that's different from what the council adopted.
Right.
Yeah, that's why it creates a complexity issue.
As long as it passes, then it all matches.
I'll tell you after the vote if it created a complexity.
Thanks.
After we reel.
After we talk to LISD.
Does it have the potential, yes?
No, I'm just thinking the easier, it may, to me, somehow makes more sense to just have the council, let TJ step out, we'll go on design, just keep it intact. Then I don't have that, you know, tracking of this is here and that's there.
Legally, it can be done both ways, so the conversation, I guess.
This is my request.
You still said which one is.
Since I can't make a motion.
If it created complexity, you said yes. So.
So, I mean, what's the, what's the pleasure? I mean, it is a lot simpler to just pull it from consent, throw TJ out the room for a minute, vote on it, and then move on.
I'm all simple.
Just keep it simple. I'm with public school, so.
I think it's cleaner.
Of course, that means I can't vote on any of the consent agenda. I don't vote on any of the consent.
No, we'll pull, we'll pull this from the consent agenda.
You pull it from consent.
And then vote on that afterwards.
Okay.
You wouldn't be voting on the master strategy.
I wouldn't be putting on the whole master strategy. You know, again, that's, I am, I am at, since I can't make the motion, nor can I second it, it is purely at the limb of council.
I'm always for the, keep it simpler. We got it?
Yeah, so we'll just do it, but pull item from consent.
Still the next one. Who are we at?
We are down to the first public hearing.
The only one?
Yes.
Here.
You see every year, any requirement.
Okay, no questions on that one?
What's the time? There's always questions on it.
We're down to consent. We beat that to death already.
Yeah.
And that takes us down to, I want to say, root court.
Mayor, I would. Go ahead.
Is yours? Mine's on eight and nine. What's yours?
Uh, mine's on two.
All right, you go first.
I go first. I would like to have David visit with the council just a little bit about item two on consent agenda. This was part of your budget process, and this is where we're actually partially funding two pedestrian bridges related to a development. And this is really an important part of our trail system in Lewisville. And I saw, I just wanted David to talk through this with you a little bit so you can see the pieces that are done and the pieces that would be outstanding.
Let's get out of the location map with these different colors. The piece of the project that we're talking about this evening with the design contract is the segment that's shown in pink on the screen, including the two pedestrian bridges. And that would be an eight-foot-wide concrete trail. And the bridges are pre-manufactured type that you just set in place. Everything that you see on this map that's shown in sort of a under-pink are existing trails. For the most part, those are eight-foot wide. Most of them were installed by the developers as they developed project around the lakes. There's one segment up here next to the townhomes that I don't really have a good explanation for. For some reason, the segment of the townhomes is only six-foot wide. But they were the ones that were installed at the townhouse developer. We did get some escrow money from the developer of the Hampton Inn toward the pedestrian bridge and some of the trail. So that's where some of the funding is coming from for this project that we're talking about this evening. And then we have a future phase. There's some existing sidewalks, whoops. Some existing sidewalks underneath the tollway. There's no physical connection to those sidewalks, and those sidewalks are not ADA compliant. So at some point, we're going to have to build connections, get down those sidewalks, and then continually rebuild those sidewalks. That's a pretty expensive project just by itself, and there wasn't budget to do that this phase. We've got a developer that's working on a site plan and some plans right now over here in this area on the southwest quadrant of this lake. And they're proposing to put in the trail that you see there in a dark purple. And again, that would be an eight-foot-wide concrete trail. And that made the way in phases. They've got a townhouse developer here at the back. They'll put in this back half of the trail, and then eventually, when the commercial front develops, they'll put in this little last piece of connection, so.
Questions?
Just one question. Will there be any lighting on the trail? Or would it just be, they'd have to hike in the morning time, like any kind of lighting along the trail side?
Um, there's no lighting with our project. Of course, most of these properties, being commercial and then multifamily and nature, have a lot of on-site lighting. And I think for the most part, all this existing trail is lit. You know, what lighting there is is basically from the development adjacent to it. I don't believe there's any separate lighting, just trail.
David, point out the amphitheater, so council sees that.
It's got good lighting from, I don't know, from the, yeah.
I was just wondering.
So that's the amphitheater that, as you know, we no longer use. It's not ADA compliant, but it could certainly in the future be an interesting trailhead or some other use, and that's a future decision by the council. This was a project that we took to the Blue Ribbon. And we were working on the bond program. It's about a $17 million program to come in and expand landscaping, do the bridges that we're talking about doing now, and expand the sidewalk in areas where it needed to be expanded and connect it all, as David is pointing to, along 121 Tollway. So this will be a project you'll see again in the future. And I think it's really one of the better trail systems in the community if you've not gone out there and watched. It's really nice.
Yeah. Our piece of the trail that we're talking about this evening, the light pink, plus the two bridges, right now the estimate is right at about $1.2 million for the construction.
Thank you, David. And then, Mayor, we also need to pull, now I'm afraid of you. You had eight and nine, go ahead.
No, you have to pull five, don't you? So you and T agree with that?
Yes, five. Just had to pull five.
Can you do that one right now?
Sure, so we're pulling item three and five so far? Okay, I'm going to start charging.
Mayor, if I could speak to the council in closed session on eight and nine on a legal issue? We can do that.
Before the meeting?
We can do it right now.
Okay. Okay, we'll now go into closed session.
Okay.
So that's, could be an extra problem.
The call tonight's section of Louisville City Council order. We do have a forum present. We begin tonight with the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones. Please rise. If you bow your head in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge to the American and Texas flag. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I guess we don't have anybody to come up with this proclamation about?
Go ahead.
Okay, guys, I've got a proclamation tonight. Whereas in 1844, the Holford and King families were in first to settle the area of modern-day Lewisville, naming it the Holford Prairie Settlement. And whereas in 1855, Basil Lewis purchased the Holford land and renamed the young settlement Lewisville after his own family name. And whereas, in an effort to better protect the community after a series of devastating Main Street fires, Lewisville's 815 residents held an election on January 15, 1925, to succeed the issue of municipal incorporation. And whereas, by margin of 109 in favor to 92 opposed, voters approved the incorporation of the city of Lewisville. And whereas, Lewisville has grown as a community since that day in 1925, currently boasting a population of about 35,000 households, accounting for more than 99,000 people. Now, Rudy Durham, mayor of the city of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do proclaim this month of January 2018 as Lewisville's 93rd birthday celebration. So happy birthday, Lewisville.
Good job.
Our next item will be a presentation by poet laureate J. Paul Holcomb in honor of Lewisville's 93rd birthday.
Thanks. Good evening, sir.
And it's on the board. It's an acrostic poem where you read the first letter of the, of each line coming down, and you will see the message. Happy 93rd birthday, Lewisville. As you celebrate your 93rd year since incorporation, population of over 100,000 persons provides prestige in numbers, validation by habitation. You have reached a milestone, grown from town to city. But what about the roads? The buildings, have they kept up? Infrastructure proves a city's fathers are paying attention. Railroad tracks came in 1881, caused a settlement relocation to the current area usually referred to as Old Town. Highway US 77 didn't come until 50 years later. Dallas now connects transportation wires through Lewisville and north to Denton on Interstate Highway 35, once US 77. Yes, roads are evolving, bonding the city to the metroplex. Lewisville Lake took shape in the early 50s when the Lewisville Dam enlarged the existing lake formed by the replaced Garza Dam. When in 1969, Janis Joplin and other stars were featured at the Texas International Pop Festival hosted by this town of less than 9,000 people, sleepy Lewisville was waking up and beginning to expand beyond the town. Visiting city fathers updated Old Town with the new city hall in 2004. In 2011, the art scene received a modern home with MCL Grand. Large growth in cities near the DFW Airport included Lewisville. Lewisville 2025 lays out a plan for the city as it reaches 100 years, envisioning a green place that honors its past, anticipates wisely its future. Thank you.
Public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance adopting camp standards of care. State law provides an exemption to the license requirement for childcare facilities for municipal recreation programs upon adoption of an ordinance setting forth the standards of care. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay.
Move to approve is presented?
Close the public hearing first.
Close the public hearing, sorry.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, the second to approve. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation Department of the Lewisville City Code by creating Article 7 Standards of Care for Youth Recreation Programs, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Next item is visitor-citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pull consent agenda items number three and number five.
Okay. You have a motion to approve the others?
I have the second to.
Okay, need a second to...
A second pulling those items?
Are we approving the consent agenda without those items?
No.
What are we doing?
He's just pulling those items, correct?
From the consent agenda into the regular agenda.
And then you can move to approve the consent agenda.
What are we doing here?
Need a motion to approve consent then? Without those two items that you just removed.
Move to approve consent without the items pulled.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? Motion carries. Okay.
Item number three?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd like to, um, on item number three, pulls two specific items from that. Item number eight on education and item number seventy-two on the landfill use. Or, yeah. So I'd like to pull those and vote on those separately.
Okay. Again, what do we do here? Okay. You put that in the form of a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to pull items eight and seventy-two and vote on those separately.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and make the motion to whatever you're, you're to approve.
Okay. And now I make a motion to approve items number eight and seventy-two.
Wait, wait, why don't... Why don't you make the first...
Let's do my system.
Okay.
The first motion, a motion to approve item three, except for items eight and seventy-two.
So we have a second for that.
All right, so I make a motion to approve item number three with the items number eight and items number seventy-two excluded.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, I now make a motion to approve, uh, item number three, specifically items number eight and item number seventy-two.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and we have Councilman Gilmore has left the dice. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Does that take care of the consent agenda?
Think we have item number five.
No, you still have to handle item five.
Item five, okay. Okay, go with number five there.
So on item number five, we have an issue of discussion with University of North Texas, and I'm asking that you pull that item for this evening.
And what are we almost to do with, just table it?
Just table it.
Okay.
Do we need a date, sir?
To the, uh, to the next meeting.
Somebody take that?
Move to table until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to table to the next scheduled meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is that the end of the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now we're down to reports. Everybody's sort of fuzzy over here, I'm not sure. Nothing? Okay, nothing? Lake?
Level is one point six feet below the conservation pool.
Okay, thank you. I did deal with the auditor today, got that out of the way. So it's good, thank you. Eric, Super Bowl party? Okay, we're not really sure yet, then.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I wanted to say, as we've been starting and everybody in Lewisville working on our challenge, we had the great Ninja event at the Herring Rec Center the other day. And, um, uh, today we're working on a video. But I just want to encourage everybody, it's time, Texas. It's time, Lewisville, to commit to living a healthier lifestyle. And I need to do that very much so myself. So go to ittcommunitychallenge.com and register there. The great part about this is Lewisville is in competition with our other cities of our same general size. So let's win this thing. I like to win. I hate to come in second, I hate to lose. So it's a challenge. So go to ittcommunitychallenge.com and register.
Thank you.
Well, I ate a salad today, so no, my part.
How much ranch dressing?
Only three, only three.
We thank Brendan?
No, sir.
Okay, cheers.
Mayor, we've got Color Palooza coming up. That's gonna be on April fourteenth. We are accepting vendor applications for that. It's a celebration of spring. It's a, it's a great event, and I encourage folks to hop onto the city website if they are interested in being a vendor for, for the event as it comes on. That's all.
Okay.
Well, the first thing I want to do is congratulate Keep Lewisville Beautiful. Keep America Beautiful had their twenty-eighteen national conference in Dallas this past week and handed out quite a few awards. And K O B, um, they actually, at one point, said, why don't you just camp out up here by the stage? Because they kept receiving so many awards. Probably the most noteworthy award that they received was for cities' population, um, hundred... I don't remember now. Hundred thousand to two-hundred and fifty thousand. So think about that, all across the entire U.S., cities a hundred thousand, two-hundred and fifty thousand populations. A lot of cities. And then think about Lewisville, we're just sitting barely a tick over a hundred. And then think about this statistic, there's exactly one and a half full-time employees at K O B. And we took the top award across the United States for cities in that category. They also took an award for the state affiliate. So I have to look at my brochure here to remember. But state affiliate for, um, hold on. For awards of excellence. And then another award for, um, gotta look here, should've written these down. For innovation. And then another award. So, um, they really swept the big time at the national convention. And I think Amy Wells deserves to be proud. And I think every citizen who volunteers to help with K O B deserves to pat themselves on the back. Great job done and some amazing awards. So MCL Grand, moving along, live performances. Drumroll, February ninth, is presented by Lewisville Lake Symphony. Texas Tunes on the following night will feature Gina Chavez. Black Box Songwriter Series, the very next night, will feature David Lee. So three nights in a row to get entertained with music. And then we're having the first annual Elvis Remembered with David Lee and David Allen on February eighteenth. Public events, we have Passport to Wonder with David Hira, which is a magic show on February, oh, I'm sorry, January twenty-eighth. Altu Boost Reloaded, featuring Emilio Lovera and Jorge Lynn, which is a Spanish comedy show, that's February third. And, um, what's the acoustic jam, of course, every Friday night, I always mention that one. Art exhibits, the MLK Student Art Exhibit opened on January twentieth and are well open on January twentieth. And that's gonna be, what is today?
Let me second.
Yeah, it's open on the twentieth, it opened this past weekend. Sorry, I haven't been able to get out much lately because of an injury. And, um, so that's always proven to be a great exhibit in the past, and I'll be seeing that in the next few days. And then twenty-seventeen ASL Award winners open the nineteenth in the north corridor. And that's all I have, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Uh, following up on what Councilman Daniels said about the, um, ITT Challenge, I just want to compliment the Parks and Rec Department for putting on a great, that Ninja, uh, Family Ninja Challenge was very, a very fun event. I did not participate, but I really enjoyed watching the people who did. So congratulations on a well-run event.
Okay, I need to go back and, and thank Councilman Jones for, uh, getting a proclamation last week at the MLK celebration. And I want to thank all the council members for showing up. There was a good crowd and it was, uh, it was a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, counselor? Julie, nothing there? Officer, thank for your service to the community. Okay. Julie, you gonna read the closed session?
Closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D. Number one, Section five-five-one point oh-seven-two, Real Estate Property Acquisition. Number two, Section five-five-one point oh-eight-seven, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Number three, Section five-five-one point oh-seven-one, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issues Regarding DFW Sanitary Landfills Request for Expansion.
Okay, we'll now go into closed session.